We will call the August fifteenth, North Liberty Library Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Alright, alright, anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
No, okay, didn't miss anything this time. And did everyone get a chance to look over the June minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys can't vote on it because you weren't at the June meeting, so hang tight. But today we want to make a motion to approve the June minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June.
My second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, so moved. Now we have our financial update.
Fantastic, and I'm gonna go to my actual report because it's easier for me to navigate here. Alright, so, um, well, we're sitting right where we should be, honestly. Um, average this time of year is eight percent. You'll see that some of, um, especially for you guys, that some of our, um, numbers will be a little bit higher, like contractual services, because we paid those upfront. At the beginning of the year, those will, those will bounce up even more as we have some of our databases coming due and things like that. Um, utilities was high, that the electricity bill was really high last month, but that should also even out, um, in the long run. And that is, unless somebody has any questions, it's always the first of the month is, or this first month is always pretty simple.
Yeah.
It's not too much to...
Alright, we're good. Oh gosh, now I've lost it again Jenny. I'm freaking out. Alright, so, library operations update about coming projects. We want to...
You just want me to go ahead with my, is that the?
Yeah.
You're, oh, you're not on the, the agenda. It just goes straight to mine. Yeah, it's going straight to my report is all it's doing instead of, um...
Yeah, I don't know why it says it.
So Friends is always on there, um, which is, I don't know why that doesn't show up on the agenda, I don't, as an agenda item, but the Friends of the Library, um, just had a meeting that they didn't, they don't have a lot of stuff going on. They, um, we are very excited to be working with I was sitting in Corville to bring Ann Pratchett, um, virtually to our libraries, local libraries Lit program that we do. Um, and the, Amy asked the Friends to donate toward that event and they said, um, they, she just asked for a percentage of it and they said, well, we should just pay for the whole thing for you. So they did, um, so that was lovely. Um, and other than that, they're talking about potentially having another book sale this fall. Um, that was just kind of an off the cuff suggestion because we had so many books at the last one. We thought it might be wise to have two instead of just one. Um, and they made a really good profit over the summer on their book sales, so. Um, other than that, there's not too much going on with Friends right now.
Are they going to bring back the waffle breakfast?
They are not.
That'd be to me on a personal level. I hope you pass that along.
I will pass that.
Thank you.
The waffle guy was just really hard to work with.
There.
Sometimes. Um, anyway, so yeah, so I can move on to my update if you would like and I'll do the...
After's report.
Yeah, and I'll do my, um, staff introduction first because that's kind of how we did it before, um, when the staff are here, when the staff come. Um, so I told you guys some of the things I think about me, but I'll tell you, I've been at the library for twenty-five years. Um, it is my only library, just that I've worked in three different buildings. Um, and I've seen a lot of changes in North Liberty. When I moved to North Liberty, there are forty-five hundred people here. Um, so we know that we're over twenty thousand now, it's, we've grown pretty rapidly. Um, and truly my management philosophy, as I mentioned, is just empowering the staff to do their jobs, um, and giving them the decision-making power that they need to be able to, to do the things that they do, um, which is why I think our library, um, is so successful. Um, the staff really makes it happen. They do the magic. Um, they, they make the decisions. I mean, they, they come to me when they need to. They come to me if, if there's a big ticket item that they want to purchase or if they're gonna do something really huge. Um, but for the most part, they function really well as a team. The programmers meet really regularly and, um, they do a lot of coordinating with their programs to make sure that they're not overlapping each other and, um, and, and now deciding to do a lot more of the intergenerational programming, which is, um, something they've really had a goal to do. The biggest balance I think they're finding right now is how to, uh, balance all the extra things that they added during the pandemic when there was a little bit more time and flexibility with the stuff we've always done, um, and how to figure out that balance. And, um, if you talked, I, and I don't thi, I don't think it's just libraries, but there's really, um, a state of that whole fatigue. There, there's a lot of fatigue with public service right now. And I feel like we kind of avoided that at our library to a degree, because it's such a, just a really positive workplace. They work really well and function really well together. It makes a huge difference. Um, I do quarterly check-ins with all the staff. I meet with them, um, and I, I call them quarterly-ish check-ins actually. Um, I try to meet with them on a quarterly basis. Um, I send out a note and I meet with every single staff person from the part-timers to the full-timers. Um, sometimes it's a fifteen-minute check-in, sometimes it's an hour depending on what they want to discuss. I usually try to block off at least an hour in between times. Um, I don't set goals for our staff. I always tell them, if there's things that I want you to do, I'll probably just ask you to do it. Um, but I want your goals to be something that you really want to do, that you professionally is meaningful to you in your professional, um, life and what you're doing at work. Um, and finding that work-life balance is super important too, so I, I really think that they are, they thrive more if they're making those types of decisions. So we check in on goals, um, we check in on where they are with the strategic plan pieces that they're working on. Um, and a lot of times I just have some type of a fun question that I asked them to begin the conversation. Last time I said, I know you probably all told me, but, um, tell me about your library journey. How did you end up here? Um, and I always hear something new and fun and different, so it's just a way for me to kind of make those connections with them. Um, a lot of us are, we're really busy. They're on the run a lot. Um, our staff is super flexible. They tend to shift their hours around a lot. Um, if you saw the flamingos around town during the month of May, this is the first year that Melanie allowed anyone else to really help her. In the past, she has done all thirty-one days of flocking. Every time she was out there sneaking around doing them, um, she, this year did, and I think she's had people do a couple of days here and there, but for the most part, the first year, I don't think she let anyone help. Um, we have some goals to do, another flock, um, of like Hawkeye ones. Um, they're really hard to come by though. The, the black and, yeah, gold flamingos are a little rougher to get. We can find navy, but we're having a r, hard time finding black because we might have to paint some, um, to get them, but those will be a hot commodity, I think.
Scott can help with the painting.
Yes, he can, probably.
Pro.
Um, so that's, I mean, that's a little bit about me. As I mentioned, I, um, am the Vice President, President-elect for the Association for Rural and Small Libraries. I just finished, um, a long, long set of terms on the City of Literature Board and, um, two back-to-back years as President because they did, our President, um, resigned, and so I had a double year, um, which was great and a lot of fun. I, I felt for me that it was time for me to let someone else take a role in that. I, I think to keep it fresh is really important. I'm really passionate about that, that's the City of Literature. Um, and I think it's a great organization, but I think it's also important for others to do that. So Kelly took the helm. Um, we had to do a little bit of, um, switching around at the City of Literature as well because in the past it said it had to be a city councilperson or, um, uh, the library director. And for smaller communities, that's means it's either me or Allison, for the most part, in Corville, um, doing it. And Allison's been on it even longer than me, um, and she's agreed to stay, but I said, I'm gonna let you, someone else do it sometime now. Um, I've been on it, yeah, it's been a long time. Ryan asked me to do it years and years ago. Um, so it's a great board, but, and then just doing other, the, um, Optimus Club. I used to go to all the meetings. I don't go to the meetings often anymore. I'm just, I'm pretty active as far as just like helping out at the different events that they've hosted and things like that when I can. Um, and just being involved in the community in whatever ways I can find to do. Um, and again, you know, with the, the Blues and Barbecue, which was my love for many years, I was passionate. Um, I created the Trash and Recycling Program at this, the, the least popular one, but it's, it was, I am, at the library, they will tell you, and at home, I pick things out of the trash if people don't recycle. Um, I'm pretty crazy about it, so it, it fit me to do that, um, and I loved it. Uh, working with Johnson County Refugees, who's fan, a fantastic partner with that program and with the library as well. They've been great for us, to us. Um, so that's me in a nutshell. Um, and then of course, like I said, I'm kind of a policy nerd. Um, I am presenting at the, the Association for Rural and Small Libraries. I actually, Erin and I are presenting on, um, basically, so you're a small town, you don't think you need diversity? We're gonna tell you why you need it. Um, and I can't tell you what the name of that is, but something like, so you don't think you're diverse? Um, so we're doing that program and then they emailed us back and said, yes, and could you add something about youth services and this other thing to that program? So Erin and I were reading through our description that we gave and we're like, wow, we really promised them a lot for a fifty-five minute presentation. Um, so we're gonna, um, do that and then they called me, like I said, and asked me to do one on policy, which I've done for them before. Um, they wanted it to be a little bit different this time, so I, I just kind of made up some stuff and sent it to them and now I have to figure out how to come through with it. Um, but the one I'm most excited for, and I've told, um, this is not, I've told Scott and Jess and Jesse and Laura, um, but I haven't got to tell Brady and, uh, you Lindsay, but, um, is that I spoke, we last year presented a program called Policies of Yes on, on inclusion and policy at the Association for Rural and Small Libraries. And then we've been asked to do it. Uh, it was Kelly from Public Services and Emily from Family Services and myself. Um, we, we did our, um, Dog and Pony Show at the conference last year in Reno. And then we were asked to present online three times in the last year. Um, and then I was asked to be on a library leadership podcast and talk about this subject. And then I was, um, contacted by the Queensland Library Association in Australia and asked to come speak in October and they just sent me my tickets, um, a couple of weeks ago. So I'm very, very excited and fortunate to be able to go and do that, um, that program there. And, um, the conference program says keynote, but I don't know what that means there. I don't know if it means the same thing that it means here because there's a lot of keynotes listed, so I'm not quite sure it's the same. But we'll see when we get there, I guess. So that's me, um, and we can move on from that. Um, so do you want me just to move into the library's update, the library update?
Yeah.
Alright, um, so we are, in this budget year, we were approved for two capital projects. The first is to design and install a new, tear out our old and install a new, um, circulation desk or information desk is what we call it. Um, we want a more mobile and smaller desk. When we, when we expanded in two thousand fourteen, we thought this was the coolest desk and we quickly found out that it was really not that functional, um, the way it's set up. We're not thrilled. Um, so we're gonna tear it all out. We're gonna have pods, um, like three, basically three small desks. There are a couple of them, at least two, um, will be mobile. They'll be movable so we can move them around if we want to do programming in that area for flexibility, if we want to move it over into another area to check out. Um, so whatever purposes, and it'll just look a lot cleaner and more approachable. Um, if you've been to Cedar Rapids Public Library, it'll be similar kind of to what they have there. Sort of more of your concierge look, um, where we can greet people right there and come out from behind the desk a little bit. Um, and the second piece is an acoustical panels to go in the main hallway. If you've been in the building when there's children, it can be very loud. Um, it's hard to hear people at the circulation desk. It's been something that's been on my plate and goal for a while. We actually had acoustical panels in the original plan and I was not the director, so I'm not gonna take this one, but, um, they came and nobody knew what they were and they got sent away. So, we are gonna try again and get some acoustical panels. Um, we'll be working a shiv-hattery on both of those projects. They actually said that the acoustical panels, I could probably do myself, but I know nothing about what I need and measurements and those things. It's pretty daunting. So we went ahead and built in the cost for them to do that with us. Um, the other thing we're really excited about, and Kelly talks about this a little in her report too, is that we, uh, met with United Action for Youth, um, and wrote a partnership grant with them for the, um, to the Community Foundation of Johnson County, um, to do a mural collaboration. We are really, the hope is to make it, um, a movable mural, so it's not set in place if we ever move or if we want to bring it somewhere else or, or display it somewhere else, that it can go with us. Um, one suggestion from our city planner was that it be ma, made on metal gauge. Um, I don't know if that's what we'll end up with or not. It's pretty much, um, all up in our heads right now, but the idea would be to create this portable mural and have a local muralist work with some of the United Action for Youth kiddos in our community and in IO City to design and, and paint the mural. So we're really excited about that. As I mentioned, I'm super passionate about public art and I really want to see that grow in North Liberty. We don't have a lot of public art. Um, we do what we can in the library, but while we have art in the library, it's not really public if it's not accessible twenty-four seven. So my goal is that art that can be out there, um, in the community for people to see and to expose people to art that may otherwise not have the opportunity. Um, and then professional activities, just talking about, um, I just, we just did a library leadership institute last week. I spent three days in Cedar Rapids, um, with a group of up, up and coming leaders, twenty-six leaders participated. Um, I was on the first leadership institute way back in twenty oh-three maybe? Something like that. So it's been a while. Um, they've been doing this. And Maureen Sullivan, the consultant, is from, um, Connecticut and she's been doing this program this entire time with us and seeing it grow and change. Um, she actually just took a job as interim director of the New Haven Public Libraries, um, system in Connecticut and we had, got to hear some really interesting stories from her while she was here. Um, it was at Kirkwood Center, which I, it was a fantastic facility. I have not spent any great deal of time in that facility, but it was really great. Um, and then I mentioned the Rural Rise Summit to you already. I just was, um, brought that up here. I'm really gonna just be there as a kind of observer and, um, as a chance to network and get to know some of the folks in that, um, group. They've kind of, um, reached out to us a little bit about partnerships and potential things we could do with the Association for Rural and Small Libraries, so they will be paying my travel costs for that. Um, and then ARSL also is next month, so that conference is in Chattanooga. Um, so we'll be, actually Jennifer, we try to take four. It's, um, Jennifer, our Assistant Director, myself, and then we always, we rotate two other full-time staff to go to that conference every year. Um, and then ILA is coming up in October, but I actually will, um, be in Australia. So it was a hard choice, but, um, anyway, so that, it's, it's pretty short tonight. That's all that I have, um, for us, and other than the staff reports, um, we do, I have the staff just write some bulleted reports for us, for you guys every month just so you can kind of keep a handle on what they're doing as well and see a few of the numbers. Andrews is always really intriguing. He pulls up a bunch of statistics and, um, throws them to you. And Chris, the IT Coordinator, just periodically tosses one in for you guys too. He doesn't always do it. You'll just see him appear randomly, um, in this report. And then, um, this month, actually, Melody, our marketing coordinator, is missing from this report. She was on vacation when I called for the report, so she did not get me one and that's okay. And actually Danny, her assistant, was also gone the day that I needed it, so. And she, they are, um, doing their thing. They, they do a lot of really great marketing for us. They, they get a lot accomplished and we have some really fun, fun things to look at. I, I really honestly am encouraging you all to get, um, TikTok just so you can see the library TikToks. So does anybody have any questions about the reports? I know I, I loaded your, your packet with a lot of, I mean, your files, all the orientation stuff with a lot, so.
The, uh, integration in motion, what is that? I hadn't...
That is, um, adults with disabilities, uh, different disabilities come in and she, Amy has done, she does programming with them. Um, she's done, and this is their first foray back into the community, doing some of that community programming. Um, we found as they've had some of their services cut, that we were seeing before COVID, a lot of groups coming in and bringing folks in, so Amy created programming to kind of meet those needs and met with some of the various groups in the community that, um, do, uh, the services for the, those adults. Um, so they, they bring the, sometimes they just come in and hang out. They check out the iPads and they use, sometimes they'll use the kids' computers and hang out there. But Amy started a book club with them, um, reading some lower grade, lower level readers and things. And then she's done, um, different fun programs, STEM programming and things with them as well. So that's launching, starting back up this, this month. In fact, there were two different groups in today while I was at the circulation desk, between four and five. Just gonna see if there was anything else that I thought was, I already told you guys about the cool, um, kid, cat and dog programs, which were really fun. I, I don't think we'll have to argue with anybody to bring those back again.
Yeah.
And yeah, just, we're wrapping up summer reading. That's the biggest one. Um, it'll be a little quieter this year than I think some of the past years, but that's okay. We had some really, um, fun programs for the kids and the, everybody's kind of picking up their prizes now and moving things forward in that area.
And it's ice cream in my neighborhood tonight.
Oh, you guys got that. So the last year, they, was it last year or the year before? They started, um, doing sort of, sort of neighborhood challenges and they tried to really cross-section the neighborhood so that it was a mix of folks, um, as far as economics and things like that, so that there wasn't any groups that maybe were less level than others, um, and different neighborhoods, then whoever wins, the neighborhood that has the most participants and finish gets an ice cream, um, the moo, mu-moo, is it mu-moo's ice cream comes to the neighborhood.
Nice.
That's cool. And they get free ice cream.
Nice.
And then all the, yeah, and then all of the, all of the, um, participants who finish get to pick a place to donate. We, we do local donations. We think it's really important to teach folks about philanthropy too. Um, so they get to select a donation place of their choice to donate five dollars and our, our sponsors help with those donations. That's pretty cool.
Very cool.
And I just, it's so exciting to see the numbers grow. That's probably my, to me, the most exciting thing on this is Erin's list of numbers.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just so cool to see them. Um, and I do, I would say, you know, I think it's funny, when I did the teen librarian stuff back in the day, I feel like we had almost more kids, but, and I always was like, oh, why aren't we getting the kids? But as we've grown, we see less of them because there's so many more options out there and they're so scheduled. Kids are so scheduled. It's really challenging to get them, um, to come in, but I love seeing the teens. And I, what I learned though, I think from my time as a teen librarian was, it's not always the numbers, it's the impact you're having. Um, I did a poetry program with a group, a poetry slam, and I was super excited about it. And almost everyone there was one of my teens from my teen advocacy group, advocate group. Um, and I was like, oh, there was a couple of other kids. And, uh, the next week, a mom called me and said, I, I wanted to thank you. My daughter's been dealing with some depression and that program meant so much to her. And I thought, you know what? I don't care that they're only told people there. How cool is that?
That was cool.
So, that's what it's all about. I, I joke that, um, I used to want to be a social worker. Yes. Um, and I became a librarian instead, which is really just the same thing, um, as we know. I'm super envious of Corville. Corville just hired their first community advocate or social work person. Um, we are talking about a partnership to potentially, I'm working on that right now, hoping that'll come to fruition. But for the last four years, we've hosted a social work practicum student, so, and we'll continue to do that.
That's all I got for you guys. Might be a really short meeting tonight.
Alright, well normally we would have policy to go over, but with...
Yes.
This month, we don't do that. We don't have it scheduled.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have to elect officers. So we don't have any old business tonight and you said, I didn't forget anything. So we'll move on to the new business, which is election of officers for the next year. So we have President, Vice President and Secretary that need to be filled. Please don't jump all over yourself if you're excited. Always. Feel fun to do this, though. I don't care which one we start with, please.
I just want to be quiet.
Alright, well, that is our current secretary. Laura's currently Vice President. I'm currently President. And I don't think we're supposed to fill the same spot for a second year. It's how we've always done it, so we switch it around at least.
Yeah, it's kind of hard when you're a small board. You just gotta look down or hope you don't get picked.
Right?
I'm just teasing.
Well, I'm happy to do whatever, so, whatever you guys think.
Look at that.
Oh, I love it.
I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I think it's probably us, right?
If anyone wanting to be President will start there. I love the avoidance by kind of that and that's really great.
This is cool.
Yeah. That's why I did Vice President, and then I only had to step in once.
That's fair.
Over the year. President basically just makes the agenda each month and sends it to Jenny and then she fixes it all anyways. Um, because I always forget something and then you get to play the gavel. It's super fun. Highly recommend.
So you'd be very like excited about using it at the start of the meeting. That's good.
I'm very enthusiastic about the gavel, yes, that's part. That's why I did this twice, so.
Yes, I will nominate myself.
Yay!
Person of the, uh...
First awkward moment.
Alright, love it, thanks.
So I don't have to do the minutes anymore.
Can I say you did a most excellent job at...
Honest, the kudos, Mike Healer, which is a big deal.
Yeah.
And I think I did them for two years in a row.
You did.
I wasn't supposed to. I, I...
No, that's fine.
Mistakenly, fella.
Fight you for it.
Alright, well, no one wants to fight Scott for that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, what do we think about Vice President then? Chris, it's, I think it's your turn.
Yeah, you, you've been.
Okay.
Yay!
Yeah, yeah.
And then Secretary, who likes taking notes.
I feel like we should nominate Brady because he's already taking notes.
I saw that, I, and...
I would take some notes. Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Right, well then, alright, so we have Scott for President, Chris for Vice President and Brady for Secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you have to do a motion?
I don't know. I don't know if we have to do an official motion, do we?
I should, just to be official.
One by one or?
Probably the slate is fine.
Yeah, yeah, no, me either. You can just motion for the slate.
Alright, yes, so, okay, does anyone want to make an official motion for that slate of officers?
I will make a motion for the new positions, officer positions.
Alright.
Your second.
Okay, okay, so then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed? Now we have our new officers and that will start next month, which next meeting is September nineteenth, I think, is what? Yes, six-thirty, six-thirty, Laura. Back on time.
Oh my god. I've never done that before.
Right.
That's alright.
It's all good.
Yeah, it was just the orientation and you already know it.
No, you should have texted me though.
I just was like, I'm sure Laura's, I, I didn't hear she wasn't coming. I didn't even think about it. I just thought maybe you had something come up.
No, on my phone, the calendar reminder was still just six-thirty, so.
Oh, do we have to officially adjourn?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, well, that's all we have unless someone wants to bring something else up. Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
You can second.
You all in favor of a... You all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, till next month.